Okay, I'll call the meeting to order at 7:04. Can we have a roll call, please?
Mr. Allred.
Here.
Mr. Andreessen.
Here.
Mr. Fell, Mr. Hopkins. Ms. McFarland, Mr. Rose, Ms. Sims, Ms. Yu.
Here.
Okay, it looks like we have a quorum. Any changes to the agenda?
There are none.
Okay, approval of the minutes. So we have approval of the minutes from three previous regular meetings of the Plan Commission to approve. That's the November 21st, 2024, December 6th, 2024, and the January 16th, 2025 meeting. Any comments on the minutes from the last three meetings? Are we ready to make a motion?
I'll move that the very impressive minutes, which I'm taking, I mean seriously, of the last three meetings be approved.
All right, so we have a motion by Mr. Hopkins. Is there a second?
Second.
A second by Ms. Sims. Any discussion on the minutes? Any changes? If not, we'll do a voice vote. All those in favor say aye.
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 Any opposed? All right, that passes. Communications, any communications?
No.
Okay, we have no continued public hearings, no old business, no new business, no new public hearings, no new business, audience participation. For those of you watching at home, we have no audience today, so we will skip past that to staff report. Is there a staff report?
I guess since Lou and I were talking about it beforehand, I took the special use permit for the Dutch Brothers Coffee Shop to Committee of the Whole on Monday, and they recommended approval of it to City Council for this coming Monday, so that will likely be approved.
All right. Thanks for the update. That brings us to our study session.
Okay, so it's just, you just get me tonight. We've had some sicknesses and Andrea's on vacation, so I will, I'll run through this with you all. So tonight, I'm gonna kind of go a little bit out of order from the study session as it was listed on the agenda, but it's the same components. But first, I wanted to talk about sort of the timeline going from here to ultimately getting the plan adopted by City Council. And then after we go through that, because I talked to Dustin earlier, and it seemed like talking about that before we get exhausted from talking about everything else is probably a better, a better way to do it. So, and then we'll run through the maps sort of in order from, excuse me, in order from sort of probably least need for discussion to most need for discussion. So we'll start with Connected City, go through development opportunities, and then finish up with place types. Because I've added some text as well to the plan since we last met, and then updated the map as well. And then we can go through and sort of just talk about some changes to the draft plan. Not sure if everybody's had a chance to look through the updated draft in great detail, but we can chat about that. So, just in general, excuse me, so we thank you all for responding to our poll, for your availability for, you know, upcoming Thursdays through the end of March. If we needed to meet, it looks like we could have a quorum at every single meeting between now and the end of March. So I think, I'd say just plan on, you know, if you said you're available for those certain dates, just mark those on your calendar as, you know, as being booked. Just assume that we're gonna meet every Thursday from now till the end of March. And then once the plan is recommended to council...
Excuse me?
Yeah.
Every Thursday, you mean literally every Thursday or every scheduled Thursday?
So we would, yeah, sorry. I'm just gonna take this off since nobody is near me. So, yeah, that's much better. Now I can actually breathe. Okay, yeah, so we can, we can have special meetings on every not-scheduled Thursday. So we, I mean, I guess we can discuss that here tonight. We, you know, I'm just, but it just looks like everybody's available. So if we needed to meet sort of every Thursday, we could. But happy, happy to discuss that as we talk about sort of this timeline here. And once, once, yeah, go ahead.
Since I know I'm not available all of those, and reported I wasn't, I'm assuming what you mean is not everybody's available, but you have different quarums that you think you can pull off.
Correct, yes.
Just to be clear.
Yeah, a couple of them are sort of bare quarums. So there are a couple where only five folks were available. That was March 6th and March 20th, but the rest of them were either seven or eight folks said they were available. So, yeah, so I think we've got enough people where we can, where we can meet as much as we need. And then the plan is that once the plan's recommended to council, this is probably the type of thing that's not gonna just take one council meeting, and we'd like for council to be focused on the plan. So we're planning to have special meetings for City Council, and we're going to target those for Thursdays, since that's the days that Plan Commission usually meets. And then all of the commission would be invited to attend those meetings as well, because I'm sure that council would benefit from having Plan Commissioners' input at those. That's, that's sort of our tentative plan going forward.
And when would the public hearings be held?
Well, that's what I would like to, so if we skip down to this next piece here. So I would like for us tonight to set a date for the opening of the public hearing at Plan Commission, and then sort of kind of go over how we would want to handle those public hearings. So, you know, do we want to take the plan in different sections at those hearings? Do we want to just plan for two or three, you know, public meetings where the public hearing is open? So that's all I'd say up for discussion here. But the, so setting, setting a date to open the public hearing is important because we want to, we've already got a postcard that's ready to go. We're gonna send it out to every single person or every single residence in Urbana. So all we need to do is fill in the date to invite people to the Plan Commission for, you know, for the opening of the public hearing. Or if we wanted to, if, getting some static there. Not from my mic. Anybody else?
Bring along.
Okay, will do. Okay, so, excuse me. So the earliest date that we could feasibly open a public hearing and meet all of our required notification requirements would be if we wanted to have a special meeting on March 13th. We could do that. So that's a few weeks out from today. We just need to send out, we'd need to put an ad in the News Gazette by March, or no, sorry, by next Wednesday. But if we wanted to target that date, that would give us, you know, we'd have it tonight's study session, we could have two more study sessions between now and then. We could also schedule it for the 20th at the regularly scheduled Plan Commission meeting. But we would like to, we would like to open the public hearing in March because it's probably gonna take more than one meeting at Plan Commission, possibly. But then when it gets to council, it's probably gonna take multiple meetings as well. I know the mayor would love it if we could get the plan adopted by her last day in office on May 5th, but that's rapidly approaching. So just wanted to kind of lay out the timeline or the, some key dates there. So I will open for discussion here.
I don't know if Kevin's noticed that the mayor has joined us. Since it was obvious to us, I thought maybe...
Let's get there.
You should know too. So the plausible schedule that you've laid out is...
Yeah.
Because of notice requirements, the 15 days, et cetera, that the 13th would be the first.
Yeah.
It would leave the 20th as a possibility for a second. And if the, the council was going to try to schedule two special meetings, those would be in addition to their regular Committee of the Whole and their regular meetings?
That's, that's my understanding. Yes.
So if those were on two Thursdays, that could be as, potentially as soon as the 27th? And...
And then the third.
But those special meetings would also have notice requirements?
Uh huh.
And the... Are we avoiding a Committee of the Whole session of the council as well as those, I mean, is it two special meetings, Committee of the Whole, and then council action? Or, because, I mean, we don't have a couple, we don't have very many extra weeks in this schedule to try to make this happen. So I'm trying to be really clear on...
Right.
What's expected. Now, so the other issue to me is, do we have any sense of whether anybody cares? I mean, I've been through this before, and the whole sequence of this has been so completely different from the last time, that we've had almost, we've had almost no public participation at any study session. We've had almost no public media discussion of any of the issues or any of the... And so are we gonna have a public hearing and nobody shows up? Or are we gonna have a public hearing and discover that there's tremendous disagreement about the content of plan? I have no clue. And I, I mean, it's just very, very strange to be in a process like this at this stage.
Sure, Madam Mayor? Yeah, I'll put my mask on. I don't think I'm contagious, but...
Thanks. I realize this is a little out of order, but, well, it's not out of order. This is a study session. Yes, I believe there is public interest. Yes, we will hold a public hearing, and that gives the opportunity for people to show up. And I want to remind everybody, and I'm very proud of the fact of how much public input and participation has gone into this plan, which is unprecedented compared to past processes. So, so we started this in 2020, when we think about it. And you were all part of it, and we were all part of it, and the community participated in multiple different ways. So I think we all could be very proud, and I really wanted to thank all of you for the effort you've put into this. So yes, people will, we will hold the public hearing, we'll see who shows up. I think there is public interest, and we have a plan that's on the verge of being released. So...
I guess, I was focused on a very specific part of this whole process.
Uh huh.
I understand, and I'm well aware of what you're talking about. But as a document with specific content, there has never been a meeting of the Plan Commission studying this or reviewing it in which people have showed up, unless I'm forgetting something.
Early on, there was a few, but not since.
And a few, you mean a few people, not...
Yeah, like three, maybe?
Yeah. So I'm really asking a question. Do we have, do we know whether if we hold a public hearing, we're going to have 30 people who want to talk and who want to say that they disagree with something, or that they have, or do we have some confidence in two sessions with the council? Are we, are we preparing ourselves to have deliberative modifications, revisions, and reworking of the plan over two sessions? I just don't have a sense of where the rest of the participants are.
Well, we won't know until we give them the opportunity. And that's what our job is, to give people the opportunity. And we have, and we will continue to do so. So I say, give people the opportunity. And we still have...
I'm not disagreeing with that. I'm just trying to be prepared.
Well, one thing I've learned is you can be as prepared, you can try to be as prepared as you can, but boy, the last few years, you have to be prepared to be flexible and adapt and respond. So I think have the public hearings, which is what we are required to do.
No, I understand.
So I encourage you to continue. And yeah, we do need to have the opportunity for the City Council to weigh in. And I think there will be public input there as well. So...
Would it make sense to have one of the meetings with the City Council ahead, in between two meetings that are public hearings? Or, in other words, as somebody who's worked at this, if we're gonna get real feedback and useful content feedback, then especially given our limited staff, if we're actually gonna modify anything, or revise anything, or actually get into a level of detail that has, in some cases, happened in the past at the public hearing stage, last time around, there were revisions made at the City Council with deliberations going back and forth between the City Council and the Plan Commission. So I guess I'm trying to imagine how we can get the most deliberative sequence of activity going among these participants, more than just meeting the notice requirements.
Sure, no, I understand. But I think it's at the Plan Commission stage now, so it's up to you guys to set your dates, and then we'll work around that.
Would it do, before, so I guess what Lou, one of the things Lou is asking is if we, if it would be possible to have a Plan Commission public hearing, then a council, is it council study session? Or what are we calling the Thursday council sessions?
I mean, we're just calling them special meetings since they're not on their typical Monday, but...
Are they meant to be like a study session then, or?
They would happen sort of like a study session, yes. I mean, how else could they happen?
Yeah, I mean, but I think the way, the way that I was conceiving of it is, it would be Plan Commission makes a recommendation, and then we're holding special meetings of the council just to talk about the plan, so they can be focused on that. So it's not, you know, a three-hour meeting where they've got five other things on the agenda and, you know, so. But I, I kind of like the idea, if it's possible, to do a Plan Commission meeting, and then a council meeting, and then bring it back to Plan Commission if needed.
Well, I mean, it's not...
Yeah, the purpose of these special meetings for the council is to focus on the comp plan and nothing else. As you've seen our council meetings, that we've had some packed agendas lately, and I expect that to continue. So we really want to focus, this is so important, that really these special meetings are to focus on the comp plan.
Right. As Dustin was trying to say, if we, if we do sort of a typical process, where the Plan Commission figures it all out, recommends to the council, and then the council has two study sessions of its own, it doesn't quite make sense because we should have some of that feedback going both ways. And it would be simpler in the, in the closing out of this, if a recommendation, which has to come from the Plan Commission, were actually closer to what the City Council wanted to do than if they got a recommendation and then wanted to do a whole lot of revisions. That's what I'm trying to think through.
I think part of this arises from what has been happening lately, is that we haven't had people coming to our meetings to provide comments on cases, as well as the Plan Commission, or as well as the comp plan. And then when it goes to council, there's suddenly a lot of interest and comment. And so we're, we're made to look like we're out of the loop with what the community is saying about something. And I think we won't know that until we have an initial public hearing, and maybe people show up, but also maybe no one shows up. And then council holds their first study session, and everyone shows up.
Yeah.
And there's a lot of discussion, and there are things that we would want to be able to respond to, I would guess, in terms of, you know, our recommendations that we eventually make. So, yeah, it's an interesting idea, I think, if it's possible to, I mean, is there, before council looks at it, is there anything that says they have, we have to have made a recommendation? Or is it just before they make a decision about it, we have to have made a recommendation?
Yeah, I think it's the latter. And I mean, it's a, it's out there for the public to review right now. So, I mean, it, you know, council could be reviewing it at any, any time they wanted to, so.
Right. But as we know, these things, they tend to happen in the meeting context, so...
And I think we, as a city, can make a concerted effort to let the community know they really need to come to Plan Commission. And, and they really need to make their opinions known at Plan Commission. So we will do that.
Yeah, we met, I met with staff a couple of weeks ago now, and we talked about this. That's where this postcard idea comes from. So we talked about things that, that the city can do beyond just the minimum notification standards to try and get the word out and get people excited about coming to Plan Commission. So there was the postcard idea. I think there's some social media approaches.
Their neighborhood listservs that we need to really get the word out.
Putting posters or flyers up in certain places where people get information about this kind of stuff.
Because really, the work should be done at Plan Commission, so by the time it gets to council, it's something that...
We need a little help from the council. That's what I'm trying to get at.
Okay.
But it might...
Another piece of this, it may or may not be evident, is one of the ways we'll get community reaction is to give them a document to react to.
Right.
Which hopefully we can do by the end of tonight.
That would be great. That would be excellent.
I'm, oh, I'm sorry. Just want to offer two things. One of the things that I like about the sort of amended schedule around getting council feedback is that people might be peaked, right? So seeing that discussion might actually generate more interest to come to a meeting. So, and, just I'm gonna be the Debbie Downer, 13th is the weekend, week bef, so it's the Thursday before spring break, the 20th is spring break. So I think people would say that we aren't being the most inviting if we choose those dates because of the whole spring break issue.
Yeah.
Personally, I won't be here, and I...
And I don't want to be the Debbie Downer, but I just, I just know perception is everything, and people would consider that to be not inviting community participation.
Something that Lou mentioned, too, the lack of media reporting on anything about the comp plan, other than maybe years ago at this point. Can we seed some interest in the media? I mean, can we put things out, you know, in, if not the News Gazette, then like smile politely, or some other sources where people are getting information about this?
Yeah, I think we can get the word out.
And not necessarily just like a formal...
Press release.
Press release, but, you know, yeah, create some interest where they'll do like a story about something.
Create some controversy. What's an issue? If we really think we need to have two public hearings and two council meetings before the council actually acts on it, then we must think there's at least one thing in this document that two people in town disagree about. You know, and we, if we put some things out there, we don't have to identify the disagreement, but if we put some things out there that are specific enough and pointed enough, then people have a reason to react. This is, you know, basic planning theory 101, Mike Brooks. So I, I mean, what I'm saying is, yes, we need to get, we need to get the media, we need to get people to actually thinking that there's content here that they care enough about to come to a meeting and say something about, support or not.
There's a great deal of content. I would submit that people are overwhelmed with controversy right now, and that may be a factor in all of this. But, but yes, we will get the word out. We'll encourage people to be here. This is very important. This is very important to our local community, and we will get the word out.
And it doesn't have, sorry, it doesn't have to be negative content.
It can be positive content.
Really positive, because I think in the middle of the chaos of the news today, right, like recently, just being hopeful and things that stand out over... Sorry. Just being hopeful, thinking about things that people can look forward to, things that make our community hallmarks and stand out, also could be good media. Because, right, I think sometimes people, when they think about media stories, they think about controversy. But sometimes just being like, we're really doing these things well. I mean, I think my, our vision, this plan, this, our community's vision is something that many people want. And to sort of elevate that, like, you know, I mean, I just think about the businesses that opened up and how that was just such a positive story and the entertainment. So I think that, you know, sort of seeing how all of that fits within this larger vision of where Urbana is going is good. And maybe the only controversy would be how it doesn't, how, in some ways, as a city, what, what is here feels sometimes a little bit different than maybe what champagne has done. So I think that this is actually much more, you know, neighborhood-y, community-oriented, that milk it. I mean, it's not a, I mean, it's not a bad thing, right? Like, but, because I think when I talk to people who've listened to our meetings, people are real, again, I hear people providing feedback about our meetings, and they're really excited. And they've appreciated our discussions, they've appreciated the thoughtfulness. I've heard from a couple of people who've like sent me messages about just, again, how they're looking forward to this, and they appreciate the attentiveness that our conversations have been, so...
So we have a TV audience?
You do have a TV audience. You have a community behind you. And in a world filled, that feels, filled with chaos, you have a plan, we have a plan in front of us that reflects the community's input from the past few years, and we can all be very proud of that. And that's, that in itself is a story that we should tell. And we'll give people an opportunity to speak. And now I'll leave this microphone and let you get back to your meeting.
I think what Karen said is all... I think what, what Karen said is also a good angle for a story. So, to, to talk about, you know, there's been a lot of positive activity in downtown and one of, although there has been some, certainly some conversation about it in the meeting here, but big move number four, right? Make downtown the economic driver, right? So, talk about that activity as being something that is part of the comprehensive plan and then jump into the, the rest of the plan beyond that. But the time, Karen brings up a good point. So, you mentioned, I mean, we did the poll and I didn't look at all of the poll results, but I know I won't be here on the 20th.
Right, yeah.
I think you mentioned, Chen Chi was not planned to be here on the 20th.
Yeah, March 20th was the, possibly a, a bear quorum of five, so...
Okay.
I mean, we could open up the public hearing on the, the 13th. That's the, the soonest we could, we could open it up. We could have our first meeting. Looks like seven of you would be available then. Get the ball rolling.
Then have the 27th, assuming we need, assuming if we need a second public hearing meeting and skip the 20th?
Your proposal would have the special council meeting being...
Well, yeah, I, actually, I, and I agree, I still think that's a good idea. If we could, and then the, that would make a second commission public hearing meeting on the...
April 3rd.
April 3rd.
Second council.
And a second council on the 10th. And then you've got committee of the hall, that makes it, right? By the 5th. It actually makes it a week before that, I think.
All right, I think I lost something in here. All right, so, plan commission, public hearing on the 13th, then nothing on the 20th or something on the 20th?
Yeah, I've got...
Well, I think honestly...
From Karen's perspective, nothing on the 20th.
Not, yeah, nothing on the 20th because it's spring break and we'll all be at the beach. And then, okay, so 27th would be another plan commission meeting or no?
Council study session.
If we can pull off...
Council, okay.
I, I think another way to get, as I think Karen was saying, another way to get people to come out is if they realize that this is a weird special meeting. It's the council doing a study session on the plan. For the people who are waiting for the council to attract their attention, it becomes a reason to say, oh, this is really moving. This is, we need to get out there and either rally support or tweak the little questions we've got now.
And then if it's announced at that meeting that there will be a plan commission, second meeting on the next week...
Yeah, on April 3rd.
Then maybe we're creating some business for us.
And, and if you're sending out a postcard, I will put all of those meetings on the postcard? Because then by having these special meetings with the council, it, it raises the, I don't know, it, it, it raises the stakes that people perceive in what's going on.
And then would there, and then on 4/10, another council, special council meeting? Is that what we were saying?
Yeah.
Yeah, assuming they want to.
Yeah.
In that one, you might, I, from part of what I'm hearing, it's plausible to me that the council could have its one special meeting, especially if it's earlier in the Commission public hearing in action or already taking into account that interaction with the council. That the council could then go directly to committee of the hall and not have to have another special session, but who knows?
Yeah, I, I think the concern is that going directly to committee of the hall, there's going to be lots of other things on the agenda for that meeting.
That's what, I, I'm saying, I understand you need at least one, that special meeting. I'm not, it's not clear to me, but people who are on the councils know better whether they need two special meetings than, than I do. Yeah.
And if we know in advance, we can, we can set the agenda for the committee meeting to accommodate, to focus on the comp plan. It's a very busy time anyway with the budget and transition and administration and all that stuff. So, so we would make the comp plan the priority for even the committee of the hall. It's that important and it's been so long and...
But, but I'm also trying to at least leave the option by not putting all of these things scheduled on the postcard.
Yeah.
And a very busy council might decide, hey, we don't really need to have a second special meeting on the plan because we've...
Well, like I said, we can, we can manage the agendas for the council.
And I mean, if we're concerned about the dates we're putting on the postcard, we could put the plan commission, uh, uh, March 13th, the special council on the 27th, plan commission on April 3rd, and then we could say April 10th if, you know, if needed, we could put an asterisk or something.
Yeah, that, that's what I'm trying to get at.
Yeah.
Sure.
Yeah, okay.
All right. I think we're, we've, we've accomplished goal number one, I think.
Yeah.
And then for those public hearings, I mean, I, I think we, well, let's see, now that we're talking about it sort of in these, in, in the way that we're talking about it, basic structure for those. Initially, I was thinking, you know, we'd have two, two hearings sort of in back-to-back weeks where we could take the plan in chunks at those, but now that we're talking about sort of splitting it up like this, I'm not sure if that makes sense still or if it's just, you know, at that first public hearing on the 13th, we try and sort of cover the, the breadth of the thing.
Yeah. And then we save the second meeting for reaction to whatever has happened in the council study session? Is that what you're thinking?
Yeah, I suppose so. And also just any reaction, you know, from that first public hearing too, if there's, you know, but if we give sort of the broad overview of, of the entire plan there, hit the high points, tell people, here's where you find the draft plan, you know, they've got two weeks to review it before the special council meeting and a few weeks before the, the next plan commission meeting.
So, so before the first, if the 13th is a public hearing...
Yeah.
Then there has to be a plan document available...
Right.
At least a week, if not fifteen, you could argue 15 days by...
Yeah, I mean, it's, it's, what you have in front of you is already available.
No, I understand, but it's not quite...
Yeah.
At least what I've got is not quite complete.
Right.
So, let's assume, that's why I was saying, if by the end of tonight, we can imagine a complete document, it seems to me to be a necessary objective almost.
Yeah.
Okay, then that has to be the 13th. That has to be available for the 13th because it's a public hearing, it's not a study session anymore.
Right.
We're, we're actually talking about adopt, you know, preparing a recommendation for adoption of a specific text. And so, we, are we also thinking there might be a meeting of the plan commission on the, whatever, the 6th? I know I won't be here, but...
The 3rd.
Are you, are you talking March 6th?
No, I'm March 6th. Do we have another meeting of the plan commission before the 13th? That's what I'm trying to get at.
Uh, yes.
Potentially.
Well, let's see.
Okay.
No, because...
That, that's, that's fine. If, if you're thinking that, that's okay. I won't be at either of those meetings.
Yeah, right.
But that doesn't matter.
We can potentially meet on February 27th and March 6th. That's what the poll, the dual poll asked.
Yeah, okay.
Yeah.
And, and so you're, you're imagining at least probably one of those.
Yeah, so I'm imagining a week from today, we have another study session, you know, you all tell me what needs to be worked on in the next week. I work on it.
Okay.
We meet next week, March 6th. We do the same. I think I'm also bringing a small text amendment to you all on the 6th. It's one small, I swear, I swear. We, we, yeah. That one, that one came out of a zoning, a variance request that was denied at staff's request, but we asked them to, um...
Yeah, okay.
Yeah. So, yes, we'll meet on the 27th and on the 6th, so we've got two meetings plus tonight to sort of fill in what we need to fill in.
But, but if there's a hearing on the 13th, there has to be a document available before the 6th. I mean, the study session can still go on by the plan commission, but there's got to be something that we can hold a public hearing about, that the public has access to before the meeting. Now, part of the reason I'm getting hung up on that question is, I think one of the things to make, to be clear about a public hearing is, we don't want to spend a public hearing talking to them.
Right.
We want to spend a public hearing of them talking to us. So, that, that makes it, that, that's why it's so crucial that whatever the hearing is about already be out there.
Yeah, I mean, maybe it's a few, like a couple articles, you know, or there, there needs to be some way that we're getting the message out there to the public that's not expecting them to sit down and read this en masse, right?
Yeah.
So, I know, getting, if it can all fit in one article or convince them to run a couple of articles or...
Or getting people you know are interested in particular issues to write about them or talk about them or whatever.
Influencers?
Okay.
Okay, uh, yeah, I'll give that some thought and, and see what we can, see what we want to do for that meeting.
Yeah, I guess what Lou is saying, because I was thinking about this too and we were talking about like splitting the content up across two public hearings. I mean, we really don't want people to come to the public meeting, to the public hearing, hear about this for the first time and then just react to it.
Right.
So, yeah, I agree, we shouldn't, it shouldn't be, you know, an hour-long presentation by staff summarizing the entirety of the comp plan and then letting people react to it in the moment. It should be something that we've done the work to get the content out there in different ways.
Yeah.
And then people have thought about it and then they can come and give us their input about it, reaction, ideally.
Well, do you have any suggestions for, I mean, there's, you know, there's a lot in here, so I'm, I'm just trying to think of how we, what, what types of things we might want to put out there to get people's reactions to.
I suggest that we maybe spend some time, study session time going through the document we've got as a way of getting to where you're trying to get to.
Yeah, well, that's, I mean, that's sort of on the agenda for the, for tonight after we go through some map stuff.
Yeah, right, but then let's come back to the question of, okay, what, what actually is still at issue from, that we think might still be at issue.
And one simple strategy, I mean, I don't know if you have capacity, would be like maybe each week going up to thinking about some social media posts because that might actually get more people than a newspaper article.
Yeah.
Because, and I know people follow, so, you know, just, but thinking about like what big move is and two or three highlights of what it could be like, you know, when people are imagining, which may not take a lot of time, but would generate some interest and encourage people to share with their friends and...
People that follow Kevin or people that follow the city?
I'm impossible to follow on social media, I'm sorry.
I was thinking the city.
Okay, yeah. I think I have an old Twitter account somewhere. Is Twitter still a thing?
Yeah.
Okay. All right, yeah, well, let's get, we can get into this, the actual study session and then come back. So, um, just going through, so like I said, going through the map sort of in, in order of sort of least changes that have been made or probably least, least points of discussion. I, I don't think this has substantially changed. Sorry, it's really small on the screen here. The, this connected city map, I think the last time we met, the only...
Working?
Is that...
Monitor's not working. Not on, I don't know.
Oh.
It looks like this...
Text support. Here comes Rondell. I think it's just an, just an HDMI issue, maybe.
Needs to be plugged in.
Okay, um, while, while Rondell's taking care of that, I, I think the only changes I made on here from the last time were adding the Vine Street and Illinois Street and projects that we've got planned and then the, I added number 10 here, which is at Main Street and Vine. The intersection there because it's, I know we, I think we've talked about this before, just that intersection could use some redesign because it's a really bad intersection. I think most people know that. So, I kind of added that even though it's, I don't think it's anywhere in a, it's not in a CIP or anything, but it's a long-range plan, so I wanted to at least add to redesign that intersection at Main Street and Vine Street. Aside from that, the only other changes I, I think I want to make to this map at this point are getting rid of these couple projects down here. Excuse me, from our existing plan that are already completed because we had kind of set this up as sort of a discussion piece, but now that we're looking forward, we don't need to know what we did from 2005 till now, we just need to know what we need to do going forward.
Okay, I, I've got, got it marked up, but let me, some of it's quasi-substantive, so...
Okay, yeah.
First is exactly what you just said, get rid of those two projects.
I'm going to add comments.
But, there's a trick to that. And that is, for one, extension to west from US 45...
Mm-hmm.
Has not been completed. It only goes to Lincoln.
Yes.
And that, so that project needs to stay there.
It, it, so it is actually here as number two in blue.
Yeah, but it's not on the list.
It's, it's on this list over, so the blue stuff is future stuff all the way on the right side.
Okay, so, so this label is plan roadway extensions.
Oh, yeah. Oh, and that, so on the right side, they're listed as potential and planned projects. So, I, I'm fine with changing some wording too because I...
Yes, all right, so, we, we have, the, the difficulty is that project one, that there is no project on the connected city map legend that corresponds to the connection of Olympian to 45.
But there is, it's number two, is it not or no? Oh, I, I see, you know what, I think this number two is talking about, is it talking about it going further east?
Whether it goes past 45 to the east... Whether it goes past 45 to the east.
Oh, okay, yeah.
That's why, see, that's why I'm back to, and maybe you and I can go over this when we got this thing in front of us, 'cause I've got it marked up in detail.
Uh, yeah.
The extension from US 45 West is what
Yeah.
I was trying not to delete over here, which needs to remain as a project.
Okay.
Okay, and how we, how we get a consistency between what's labeled Plan Roadway Constructions and Connected City Map.
Yeah.
We got work to do, okay, it's not. Anyway, so that, that, that's one thing.
Okay.
And maybe you and I can get together and work on some of that.
Okay.
Now, also on this map, the, um, what we've sometimes called footballs in the area north of, um, tiny homes.
Yep.
Are not anywhere in any list.
Oh, are they not?
Well, at least I couldn't find them.
I don't see them, they should be right down here.
Okay, so, so that's
Yep.
Another thing, and how we're gonna do those as, I, I, I think the, I think the difference between Ran, Plan Roadway Extensions, and we probably, well, we may wanna change that label, and Connected City Map, which actually should be the label for the whole map, and then Potential and Planned Projects, are, the, the roadway extensions are not yet projects from a CIP or an LRTP point of view, which is why we can have.
Yeah.
Anyway, it, this, it's, it's, it needs significant reorganization.
What if we call that Proposed Roadway Extensions?
Well, I, I, we need to think it through more carefully.
Yeah, yeah, 'cause they're not, 'cause they're not planned, yeah.
Well, also the alignment is not in any way definitive.
Yeah.
Right, that's true for Two Olympian East, it's less true for Plan Roadway Extensions West, but anyway.
Well, it's true for like the tiny home area, those are the alignment of.
Yeah, that, that's definitely true, so.
Is your mic on?
Yes.
In any case, you, you get, you get the, the general notion.
Yeah.
Now, um, there is, on the map, an annotation that says Berenger Circle EXT.
Yeah.
And I, I, because, let's see. Okay, that, that, that arrow, which now I agree should be there and probably has been there for a long time.
Yeah.
But because of the way we've modified the graphics, the Berenger Circle Extension, you don't know what it's about because the arrow is so difficult to see. We need to clean up the graphic style, and I realize we just don't have staff for all this stuff. We've gotta do a little bit better, though.
Yeah, we, we can do better. Yeah.
So that should be there, and it, um.
I mean, should it?
Are, are those, those little arrows like that?
So those little arrows are just, they're the same as sort of these big blue, uh, triangles, but they're more definitive because it's extending roads that are already existing there.
Yeah.
So like Tatman Drive extended here, um, there's, yeah, Florida Avenue extended, yeah, Stone Creek Boulevard. It, it's just, it's pointing out where, you know, where, where the existing road should, should connect through.
Yeah.
If you make it bigger, I guess.
Yeah.
Well.
Bigger change, the arrowhead style, I don't know, something to differentiate from.
Uh, I'll just, I'll just say bigger, better, more 2025 than.
It's here in the legend.
Than 2005.
Right, right, so, making it bigger on the way this map is done. Now, the, um, so we, we've got a confounding classification problem here with the, the legend for road type.
Uh-huh.
And the legends for the other two, the colors are, are too close together, so you misread what's going on. And I think getting rid of the green completed projects will give us another color choice that we can figure out how to use so that we can more clearly see where there are Plan Roadway Extension labeling and major or minor arterial labeling on the map and line weights.
There are some other colors we could choose to.
There, yeah.
Right, so, but again, this may be, you know, maybe you and I get together and discuss the details. The, the other quasi-substantive thing is that seven and eight on the Potential Plan Projects describes shoulder addition, shoulder addition, construction, shared use path on north side of Curtis Road. But seven and eight are actually labeling the north-south roads, not Curtis Road. And I think we wanna be, we, we should separate seven, eight, and the Curtis Road, but nine, so if it's gonna be on the north side of Curtis Road, then it could be part of nine. Anyway, and, and my reaction is from the city's point of view, we should be downplaying those. They should somehow be apparently of lesser significance to us, even though they're in the LRTP. No, other than figuring all of those little details out, that's all I've got on that map.
Okay, let me make sure to save this.
Related to this map, what, what happened to the idea of creating a kind of matrix that explained how the classification system that we see on this map, the major arterial, minor arterial, et cetera.
Yeah.
How that related to a street typology that I see kind of in the description of the place types, so I didn't know if that's just where you've decided to shift that information.
That's, that's kinda where the, yeah, so I hadn't, uh, found, sort of found time to give that task any thought. When I got into the place types and I started sort of describing them, which we'll get, get into here shortly, that seemed like a good place to add sort of the, the street type descriptions for, for each place type as well, so. That might be where that, that lies, 'cause I know Lou's suggestion was to describe, you know, describe the streets how we want them to be. So, you know, you can have an arterial road, and, you know, if it's an arterial within sort of the more urbanized area, you can say we want it to be X versus if it's out on the fringe, it can be Y, so you can sort of flesh that type of stuff out. I was trying to do that a bit in the place types, and just say, you know, in this place type, it should be low speed. Well, I think that's how I described it everywhere, everywhere for every street, but, you know.
Well.
Yeah.
So, I, I mean, I've got that as one of my questions too. But this gets back to our schedule and our staffing problem, that, um, what we've got at the moment isn't even complete for the place types. Though you may have had time to work on that, I don't know. And, and there's no linking of the street types. Now, at, at a minimum, we've got, in the map we just discussed, I think can be claimed to meet the needs of the Manual of Practice and the Land Development Code, which refers to the classification of this type of the roadways. So, you know, if we're at the end of the semester, in the world I used to operate it in, uh, and you say, "Well, we just don't have time to do street types, folks, sorry, we're not gonna do those." That may be the solution. It's kinda sad, I think, 'cause I think it's a valuable piece of this. But maybe we can figure out a way to get some staff assistance or something to, to pull that off, I don't know.
That's why I was asking, 'cause I, I kind of assumed that, that's what you had decided. But then it, there is some of that information in this Streets and Connectivity paragraph, and so maybe that's what we go with, with the reality of staffing and the timeline.
Yeah, and so we've been, you know, we, we're conceiving, I think we're conceiving of the comprehensive plan as, as a, a document that is not going to be static. I mean, our existing plan, we've changed, you know, we've made amendments to over time. If, you know, if there's sort of a, a discreet item like that, that we maybe just don't have time to flesh out in the next month and a half, but we know, um, we want to do that, then we can just make that more explicit and say, you know, we'd really like to flesh out the details of street types going forward, and then, you know, we, we could come back with an amendment to the comp plan in the next year or two and just flesh that out and, and do it, but not hold up the process just 'cause there's, you know, one more thing we, we'd really like to have in there, so.
Maybe it gets added as a little move somewhere, because I mean, a lot of what, the configuration of, of the street right-of-way relates to a lot of the big moves.
Yeah.
From, you know, healthy communities to walkability to all these things, so. It should be somewhere, I guess.
Yeah, yeah, I agree.
So I, I agree with that strategy, 'cause like I said, we're getting to the end of the semester, literally and figuratively. But I, I, there's another subtly about when you describe the plan as not static. We have to remember that legally, the, the, the plan is a document that has certain standing from a legal point of view. So it is not, it is not just changing on a regular basis, it is adopted. So yes, we can amend it, and it makes sense to think of things that we can't get done well as future amendments. But not in the sense of, oh, well, yeah, we're gonna adopt it on May and then we'll, we'll add these graphics later in June, we'll just be, you know, don't worry about it. That's not, those are two different attitudes, and it's important to keep them distinct.
Okay, any more comments on this map, or shall we move along?
I don't have a question about the map. I do have a question about, and may, I, I should maybe bring this up at a different place. But right now, right, and I know it's throughout the document and we've talked about this, like the whole comment around having most streets be slow, like wanting to kinda advocate for, you know, like, under 30 miles, right, like, and that was one of the things that came to the commission. Those are the kinds of decisions, though, that we could recommend, but actually have impact in, like, somebody else has to really agree around enforcement. This is really a matter of process, like, how does that work? So if we say, boy, we would like most of our streets to be 30 miles an hour, and Urbana Police is like, we just don't have any enforcement, that is never gonna happen, we can't enforce it, that would be like pie in the sky, that is just not something we're willing to invest in. What happens in a situation like that?
Yeah, well, so typically the speeds, speeds are a result of street design, not, not really a, a result of enforcement, so. Typically, if you, if there's a speeding problem and you feel like there has to be more police enforcement, the street's just designed wrong. If, if you want low-speed streets, you can design them that way. So really, if we, you know, if in our plan we're saying we want low-speed streets, say, throughout the city, or however we wanna describe that, then we have the policy backing to go and design streets that are lower speed. I mean, you, you can also, you know, set speed limits, and, and that's, that's all, all well and good, but it really comes down to design.
So one more practical question, just 'cause remember I'm relatively new. So hypothetically, you say we want to do that, it's in the design, the only way to do designs is to add traffic side circles or speed bumps or whatever. That's a cost hypothetically, so is the council, I guess I wonder, like, they're deciding budget now, so imagine if we say, moving forward, we want slow streets, and the council is sort of thinking about budgets, how does that get factored in because maybe there's this huge extra cost to, to be aligned with it? Do you understand, like?
Yeah, so, yeah, I get what you're saying, and, um, so I'll, I'll say the, the easiest way to, to design a low-speed street is to make it narrower, so use less pavement, which is going to be less costly. You can also do things like add more street trees so that it feels more enclosed when you're driving down the street and you don't feel like you can drive as fast, so, and we love our trees here, so I, I think that's somewhat of an easy sell. Yeah, I mean, so, so, yeah, I, I don't think it's more costly to, to do slower or lower-speed streets.
But even if, I mean, let's not, let's be realistic, though, I mean, there, if we think about just the, the, the changes that were proposed in this Lincoln Avenue corridor study, there are costs associated with those changes beyond just planting trees.
Yeah, yeah.
So, but I, I think that this is a 20-year plan, and it's aspirational, so, you know, what gets put in here are things that the community wants, and they wanna work towards over the long term, so it doesn't mean that next year's budget includes fixing all of the streets, and that's fine, that's not a failure, but it's there, right, and it's on the agenda, and people should be thinking about it, and when they're putting the budgets together over the long term, I guess, is. It's, yeah, I, there is, I, I wouldn't, yeah, I don't, it's not something that's cost-free, I wouldn't agree with that entirely.
Yeah, no, I mean, well, and, and, yeah, and, and a lot of the, a lot of what we'll be doing from here on out is redesigning existing streets, because we probably don't need any more new streets, um, you know, especially if we're, if we're trying to be responsible and make sure development pays for itself and be focused on infill development and things like that. So, yeah, it's probably gonna be a lot of redesign of existing streets, but, I mean, the beauty of streets is that over time, they deteriorate, and you have to do something, you know, you, you have to re, repave them, restripe them. So, so, yeah, to have the policy backing to make them lower speed when you have to go in and maintain them, I think that's
I thought where you go, I thought where you were going with this is that you were saying potholes were traffic calming measures.
I, I was, I, I actually had that thought about 45 seconds ago, but. Yeah, um, yeah, I used to live on, I used to live on Illinois Street out here, and one of the best traffic calming things is just to have a brick street that is, you know, not terribly level. You know, you don't feel comfortable going faster than 18 miles per hour or so down that. So. All right, next, next map. Okay, development opportunities. So, uh, there's some decent changes to this one, and I just wanna point those out. So I talked to Brad Bennett at UCSD. He helped me mark this up and sort of, uh, you know, make, make some, some changes to it, so. The most, I'd say the most substantial changes, I'll just go through some of those. So, down here in the southwestern part of the map, um, there's actually an area that's under the University of Illinois, they do sewer planning in this area, according to Brad. So I, I think before we had this sort of listed as being the red-hatched area that said, you know, we're not, you know, it'd be costly to extend sewers there. That's sort of an area that, that we're not focused on.
Now, that's a correction to the map we currently have.
Correct, yeah, yeah.
The one in front of us that was in the, in the printout.
Oh, you know what, I, so I think. I, so I think, yeah, so, sorry, the, the draft plan online still has some screenshots of the older, the older versions of these maps. The packet had attachments, I think these maps were at the end of it as attachments. Those are the, the most updated versions, so apologies for that.
So, what I had in the paper copy I picked up is not the map you're showing me now. So, which is which?
Yeah, so that, yeah, that's old, because those are, sorry, those are just printouts of the... Yeah, those are just printouts of the, of the plan as it exists online. And I haven't had a chance to go in and, and swap out these images. I also haven't been able to figure out how to get higher-resolution versions of these maps into the plan document online, so that's something else we need to sort out with our, with our software vendor. Some, some other things are, initially, we, we had, well, okay, first of all, I'll just say, I, I updated the language down here, just to be a little more specific. So, now the red-hatched areas say that these areas require new regional pump stations for sewer service, because before it was a little more nebulous. And then sort of the yellow dotted areas say that the area requires interceptor sewer extensions for sewer service. So, you'll note that some areas here south of Windsor and east of High Cross have been changed to sort of that yellow area, because those, so there's a pump station, and I could add the pump stations to the map just so that we have them, or I don't know if it's necessary, but there's a pump station up here, right about where my cursor is. And that has excess capacity. So, really, sewer service could be extended to all of the, the yellow areas here, but it would be at the expense of the developer. So, the likelihood of somebody, say, developing south of Windsor down here and building a sewer all the way down Windsor and then up High Cross at their own expense is pretty unlikely. So, and we know that on the staff level, so if a developer came in, we'd say, yeah, this area down here, you know, you're probably not going to want to build down there. So, that's another change that we made. I think maybe last time I had already showed, or I had said that I had updated certain things, like, like this activity center over near Walmart and Aldi, I had updated that.
Makes sense.
And, yeah.
If the way this is used, one way at least, is to have that conversation with developers, would it make sense to have the pump station to say, you know, this is where you would be building the interceptor sewer to, or is that...
Yeah, I mean, that, yeah, it's, I, I think that, that could be useful. I also kicked around the idea of just sort of adding a note over here with an arrow pointing down that said, it's going to get more costly the further, the further south you go here.
I think the pump station is simple enough.
Yeah.
And is specific enough to make clear what the issue is. Because this, this was one of the things that I, where I found some inconsistencies, and I guess I now understand why, because I was looking at an old map. I, I think the, the pump station needs to be there. Now, you, you're also not any longer distinguishing from serviceable by gravity from requires interceptor sewer extensions. Am I right?
Yeah, yeah.
So, i- is it actually the case that these are the same?
I, I believe it is, because these ones, so the pump station here, if you extended the, the interceptor sewers, they'd all be fed to it by gravity.
And the capacity is there.
Yeah, the capacity, yeah.
Because I thought he was saying before that the capacity wasn't there.
No, the, the capacity, there's, there's excess capacity here, but then if you were to go, like, these areas sort of on the northeast, they would definitely need to have a new pump station built out here.
That part, yeah. But I, I thought there wasn't enough to go, to go south. So, so in the area to the north...
Yeah, so, like, up here?
The, the, we're also simply talking interceptor extensions?
Yeah.
Do we want to be... If we're going to put the pump station on the south, do we want to put the interceptor ends on the north?
Like, where the sewers end, right now, or?
But me, well, not service, it's from a development point of view.
Yeah.
Which is what this map's supposed to be about. We might need to realize it's expensive to develop here, so they'll do it.
Yeah.
And here's why.
Yeah.
So, if we put the pump station on the south end, it becomes pretty clear. But then, on the north end, it's sort of like begs the same question. If I'm going to do the sewer extension, from where? And from where is going to be, I think, two different major interceptor ends, which again is simple enough to put on the map if we know where they are.
Yeah.
I'm guessing one is along North Cunningham, and one is along North Lincoln. I mean, we have a map of that, or Brad could tell us pretty quickly.
Yeah, because, yeah, because when you do the shading, it, it's kind of, yeah. It's, this, this part here is not equal to, you know, building...
Right, exactly.
Right here, yeah.
And, and we're trying to use this detail as, i- i- in a way, this is our growth boundary substitute.
Yeah.
This is how we're keeping people from developing where we gather they wait until we need to.
Yeah.
So, I think it's worth being really specific.
Okay.
Then there's some other things on this map. This, this may get into the economic development folks and what they want to say, but I would be tempted to annotate each of the major development opportunities. And the annotations would be... Well, the, the, in one, in one part, it's an identifier. So, when people, when we talk about them, we don't have to say, well, that funny-shaped thing up there in the upper left. But also, as you're, as you indicate in the place types map, I guess it's now being called, there are, there are potential labels for each of these in, in that map that would be sort of helpful. And I guess, I was thinking that there was one that seemed to be missing, but I guess, at least on the new map, it's not. Oh, I know, I know what it was. The Menards site.
Yeah.
Is, is that not a development opportunity? Because economic development people won't want to sing anything about it, because it's Menards?
Well, I mean, most, I, I think this area here is all Menards.
Right, but I'm talking about it south of, I'm talking about east of High Cross, south of, of Walmart.
Yeah, I mean, I think we're, we're trying to keep High Cross sort of as our, our eastern boundary.
Okay, so this comes back to what I was going to ask until you explained what Brad had said, why the east side is now not restricted from a sewer point of view, or not fully restricted from a sewer point of view. And if that's the case, that we're now making this yellow and putting in the pump station, then it seems to me the other piece of the Menards site at least ought to be yellow, if not identified as a development opportunity.
Which other piece, right here?
Right there, yes.
Right here? Well, so it's not yellow, because, it, it shouldn't be yellow because it's currently within the UCSD boundary.
So, it's already sewed?
Yeah.
So, if it's already sewed, then I'm back to, why isn't it a development opportunity?
Because there is, you know, there's only so much, I feel like there's only so much, well, one, one thing that I envision using these development opportunities for is where we focus our staff time on, you know, trying to make stuff happen there. So, I don't want to spread our, ourselves too thin, and I, I want us to be focusing on, on stuff that's more infilling, big sites, you know, more in-town.
Okay.
But that's a, I guess that's a, a policy choice.
Yeah, and, and as I prefaced the comments, part of this is how we label these development opportunities and how we annotate them is part of the economic development strategy. So, leaving that the way it is, ninety percent of folks are going to not notice why it's kind of an anomaly.
Yeah.
And if a developer comes along and notices, it's, you know, it's their job to come to you instead of you going to them.
Yeah.
That's okay with me.
And it, yeah, and one, one thing I, I sort of envision is, you know, if we have some economic development, you know, plan going forward, having economic development folks be able to point to this map and saying, okay, we want to, you know, we, we're coming up with a new program, we're going to target these areas as identified in the comprehensive plan. So, that's, that's kind of my, my thinking there as well.
Okay, so, it's an anomaly, and we know why.
Yeah.
And it's very intentional.
What about...
What a plan should be.
What about building out the remainder of, I forget the name of the shopping center, but on the southeast corner of Windsor and Race? Yeah, the Pines? Because that's, you've got it noted as Neighborhood Center, I think, right?
Yeah.
And that, so, I mean, that's smaller, but it, it's also something that kind of fits with the, a lot of the goals of the plan, right?
Yeah, and that's, I mean, that's here, that's partially in here as part of this activity center.
Well, it's really just south of that, though.
So, like, building out this? Yeah, I, yeah, I see what you're saying. Yeah, do we have that labeled, the whole thing labeled as Neighborhood Center? I think so.
Oh, it's...
No.
Or is it just this part?
It's Neighborhood Two.
Let me, let me go, let me take a look.
Yeah, it's Neighborhood Two on the other map. But, so, this is another example where...
Yeah, yeah, so that's this.
But to me, this is an even better example, because it has the infrastructure, it has the retention pond.
It does, yeah.
Right, so what I was going to say, and I think where Dustin's going is, to me, this is an example where, at the moment, we're treating it like the Menards site. It's white, it doesn't say it's a development opportunity, but I think this is, this should be higher on the staff's agenda than the Menards site for reasons that we've discussed before. So, I think it should be, perhaps, I mean, you know, this is what we're doing.
No, I, yeah, I, I agree, I agree, I think that's just sort of a...
Make, make it blue and annotate it. There may also be space between the end of Mumford and Stone Creek that on this map looks like a development opportunity that's not marked.
That's because that is...
Pretty underdeveloped.
Well, that's the area that Solagracia bought, and they are fully invested in farming that for, forever, so.
So, that has a future use from the perspective of this plan document?
Yeah, that was...
But that means that the Mumford extension is not, is not in the cards anymore?
I, I believe that, yeah, I think I, I think I had removed that a while back. And I, let's see.
It's right there, it's number six.
Yeah, that's there. I thought I had taken that off, to be honest.
So, if that's, I mean, the, the, the curb cut is in Stone Creek Boulevard.
Yeah.
Alignment is in the official map. So, if we're taking that out, so, let, let me back up. My suggestion is, we should not take the, put the alignment out of the official map in the sense of protecting the alignment from construction of buildings and infrastructure, because perhaps someday in the future, that link ought to be completed.
Yeah, well, we, so, they had to do a, a minor development recently, and we had them reserve space there. I can't remember, yeah, I can't remember if we had that, if we had them dedicate it. It's, it's on the plat for, for a potential extension in, in the future, but I, but it should not be on this map.
Why not?
Well, like I said, they...
It's not a project.
Right.
I think if, if, if the right-of-way was protected in the development agreement, and that's what this map is supposed to be about. It's the official map that protects rights-of-way for future street connectivity. So, so, I think it should stay the way it is. You may want to annotate it on, on this map, or in the text associated with this map. But it explains why it's not a development opportunity, why it's a bunch of white space that looks like it's a great infill opportunity, that from the city's point of view is not in the short run a development opportunity. That, that's fine.
Yeah, I'm just trying to think of the best way to do this, because, you know, we were talking earlier about putting out things for people to react to. This is one of the few things that people have, that somebody reacted to at one of our neighborhood meetings, is the person who runs the farm, and they said, hey, we just made this huge investment in this thing. Why is it on your map as a road being extended through our property that we're, you know, putting all this money into?
So, I, I think what needs to be done is, it's somewhere, it has to still be in the map in some form.
Yeah.
Maybe a different labeling, and then an annotation. Because we have to protect what's in their minor plat. But also make clear that, at the moment, you know, there's a different commitment made. But presumably, they're not allowed to build a building...
Correct.
In that right-of-way.
Yeah, I mean, it's just, it's just area they're farming.
Right, it, this is, I mean, again, it's, you know, this is long-range stuff. That's why it's planned. Anything else on the development opportunities, Matt?
Okay, should we move along to place types? And rather than sort of get directly into the map, I did a fair amount of work on the text for the place types, so I, I kind of want to get into that first, if I can find where that's at. Sorry. Okay. All right, so I'd say probably about half of these, I... All right, um, so I'd say probably about half of these, uh, I went and changed the label because I don't know if any, I don't know if we were all happy with the labels of several of these, and then other ones I, I thought could be labeled better just as I was going over the course of things. So just overall, I renamed several of the place types, updated their descriptions, and then added more details sort of in the, the following pages. So I can kind of go into that, but just sort of briefly, what we had been calling residential neighborhood and then mixed residential neighborhood, I just made those more simple and just called them neighborhood one and neighborhood two. It just seemed awkward to be labeling them different. They're both neighborhoods, they're just sort of at different levels of intensity. Um, and the descriptions for those reflect that. Rather than talking about this mixed, mixed-use core and sort of separating that into two subgroups within one, one thing, we're just calling them sort of the lower intensity is a neighborhood center, uh, and then sort of the highest intensity is city center. I'm not enamored with that, with city center. I really like neighborhood center. Not super jazzed about city center, but it was the best I could come up with. I'm open to suggestions. The institutional use, I know we had talked about getting rid of that maybe entirely, but it did seem to me like there is a sort of large-scale sort of campus-type thing, so, um, instead of institutional, I'm calling that campus now. You can see that's just sort of larger groups of associated buildings that are all serve sort of one institution. So, you know, think about Carl, OSF, University, UCSD.
Yeah, I think, I think it works. I, I noticed the, you know, sort of complete reframing.
Yeah, um, I will say I really dug into the, um, what is it, Charlotte Plan? And I, I borrowed some language from them because they, it's almost like they had gone through the same exercises that we had gone through, and I was like, oh, campus.
Surprise, surprise.
Yeah, campus, that's what we should call it. And nice segue into, instead of industrial, manufacturing and logistics, that's what they called it. I thought it worked pretty well. It's, you're not limited to just those things, but it really is sort of making use of spaces that are located near your freight, you know, near interstates, near freight rail lines. Didn't change green spaces and recreation. I think I mentioned last time I had added back the rural or residential because there's a, a specific need for that on the northeast part of town. And then agricultural, can't remember if I had added that last time, but looking out in the, in the one and a half mile extraterritorial jurisdiction, it makes sense that a lot of that should just be labeled agricultural because it's going to be that, and it should be, should be that type of place in the future. So that's sort of how, how I went through all those. So then, for each of the place types, instead of just relying on sort of this one or two-sentence description, which I kept there as, as what I'm calling a general description, I also added some descriptions for the land uses, the building, sort of building types or building form you'd see there, streets and connectivity, and then open space, just to give sort of a, an overall framing of what each of these places would look like in general. Again, borrowing from Charlotte, but it's good stuff, so, so I added that. One thing I didn't do here is I haven't put in the pictures yet, excuse me. And, uh, because we had been talking previously about a lot of the pictures we were using were sort of showing building form or building type and not sort of an overall place type. So I guess the idea would be to find images that are sort of better suited to showing the place type. And then what I did do with some of the images, and it's, it's incomplete now, but I wanted to get feedback from the plan commission on, on this piece before filling it out completely, is we had kind of talked about coming up with a matrix that shows sort of, that identifies building types, and then which place type those building types might be found in. So I just came up with a, sort of a basic table here that, you know, shows an image of a typical building type. So, you know, duplexes or accessory dwellings or single houses on the left, and then which place types those would be found in. Just, I put green and yellow, green being, yeah, those should be allowed for sure in that area. And then yellow would be, you know, this might be appropriate in some circumstances. So, you know, and this is kind of giving us a frame to rewriting the zoning ordinance because, you know, we might have, for each place type, you might have under the neighborhood one place type, say, there might be a few different zoning districts that we would create based on, you know, based on the, the specific area that we're looking at in the city. So, you know, you might have a neighborhood that, you know, sort of falls under the, you know, the lower-density neighborhood type, but it was built in nineteen thirty versus nineteen sixty, and sort of on the ground, they might look a bit different. So you might need different zoning sort of rules for those areas, but in general, sort of looking at this framework, we'd kind of, it would give us direction on how we want to rewrite the, the ordinance when we do it, so. Looking for some feedback on that. If, if you all like this sort of matrix idea, then I can get into, you know, showing things like the corner store and the big box store and where those things would fit, or the Amazon logistics center, which I think would only fit in one of our place types, but it still should go there somewhere, right? Yeah. So.
I like the matrix table. Um, not, to use your, your word, I'm not enamored of the city center still as a description. Not so much, well, it's partly because of the name, but also partly because of how it maps onto actual places. I think it's still a situation that lends itself more to a node corridor breakdown. So the downtown is obviously the mixed-use center of Urbana. But then you also have applied that color to the corridor that runs out from downtown and then down Lincoln. And I think that is really more of a mixed-use corridor. I don't know how to get away from that, and I think it, it's a different place type because it's a linear mixing of uses in a way that's different from what's happening in downtown or what could happen downtown. And I think the, the other thing, the neighborhood center, I mean, I like the description, but most of these areas are not actually physically central to the neighborhood. They're mostly on the periphery of neighborhoods, so I don't know if that, it kind of described, it connotes something different to say it's a neighborhood center. It's like it's in the middle of the neighborhood.
Yeah.
It's more of a, yeah, more like a neighborhood node or something like that still, but I don't know. Those are just the things that were sort of sticking with me.
I, I have similar reaction to that, that one. In general, I think the, the matrix is, is working well. I, I have some concern about our staffing level and the ability to complete it because as you're pointing out, it can be one of the more useful aspects of getting to the zoning ordinance without, um, hitting beyond what should be in a plan as opposed to a zoning ordinance. And, um, it's also plausible to me that this will be one of the points of discussion at both a public hearing and a plan commission meeting because, for example, the difference in definition between neighborhood one and neighborhood two is nicely subtle, let me put it that way. And the, so, I mean, one of the objectives for a draft plan is that it be a good deliberation discussion document. And I think this matrix and your descriptions of the place types are now getting to be pretty good discussion documents. But you still got, you know, you have work to do. I'm finishing the matrix.
Yeah, I mean, so, and that's one thing I'd like is if, if you can give me some direction on, say, you know, what building types would fill out this matrix, I should be able to knock out the rest of it in relatively short order. It's just, um, you know, guidance is, is always appreciated. I mean, I have some ideas for, you know, like I said, obviously like corner stores, other like bigger commercial buildings, you know, some industrial buildings and things.
I, I think your, your paragraph descriptions of the place types.
Yeah.
Are, I mean, the only one I marked up was the subtle distinctions between neighborhood one and neighborhood two, which I think are going to be the most interesting potential discussions. But, but I, I'm, I'm suggesting that you leave them as they are, and your, your use of the matrix for those two seems pretty reasonable until you start putting in your corner stores, et cetera, that will make it more interesting for discussion. But, but I think if you go, go by your text descriptions that you've got to fill out the matrix, it's, it's, you've got a pretty good frame. And there's not. So I guess the, the, another way to word the feedback is make sure you include enough in the neighborhood one and neighborhood two to let people manipulate your notion of what those are so that we gain some, you know, wider acceptance of what we think we're communicating.
About the neighborhood one and neighborhood two, I was just wondering if there's a way that you can put a short, and this is like more work, a short descriptor in parentheses, just so that it captures, because I had to read the descriptions like multiple times to catch the nuance, and I was like, I could imagine people would not get it, and, and then that could create miss under, miss something. So I, I guess if you, like, you know, like I was thinking, like you said explicitly, like low intensity or low density or just something that directs people to what you want to see as nuanced, because again, I literally had to read it like multiple times.
What does Charlotte have?
Charlotte has neighborhood one and two.
What does Richmond have?
I'm, I'm not sure. I'm, I don't know if I've looked at that one for a while. But, I mean, I, I'm trying to steer clear of these notions of density and intensity because I think, I think density especially comes with a lot of sort of baggage that is, and fear that is unfounded.
I would avoid density as a description at all.
Yeah.
But, but I think Karen's hit exactly the issue and what I was trying to get at when I credited you with subtlety and saying that the matrix, in order to discuss this, in order for somebody to have any clue what we're up to, there's got to be a way to make it more concrete. And I think it, it's hard to come up with a label of what we're trying to distinguish that isn't actu, I mean, we don't want to use the words because we don't want to admit that that's the distinction we're making.
Well.
But it basically is, right? Or, you know.
I mean, it's, so it's.
Right back here.
Yeah, I mean, so, sure, yeah, neighborhood two would come with more, you know, density or whatever, intensity.
Amount of housing.
But it's, yeah, I mean, but it, but it is, I, I'd say it is more subtle, though, because it is, you know, the one we're saying primarily consists of detached housing. So, you know, mostly that. And then neighborhood two contains a mix of housing, so, I mean, it, it could be, on the very basic level, it could just be full stop. These, you know, these neighborhoods consist primarily of detached housing. These neighborhoods contain a mix of housing. I mean, that, so that's kind of.
Except that's not actually what you say for the two of them.
I, I don't know.
What if you call the, so I would avoid density, but I think intensity could be, it's a nuance that's a little bit different. And I think, I mean, it could be something like low to moderate intensity neighborhood or, you know, something like that.
Yeah.
I don't know, I mean, it's either that or you just include everything in the, the title, like neighborhood, single family with a little of this, like, I, I don't know. I mean, you either have to summarize it some way or just explain it fully.
Well.
So if, if they're going to be labels.
Yeah.
Your full-stop versions are pretty close. Primarily single family.
Yeah, mostly, mostly.
And mixed. And those don't contradict the elaborations, which is useful. Because by saying primarily single family, you're being explicit that it's not only single family.
I'm calling it detached, I'm calling it detached housing.
Thing is primary or dominant among those uses.
But detached housing won't make sense to anybody who's a regular person.
Primarily single family.
Yeah, primarily single family.
Well, I mean, I'm, so.
Housing is an inside word that people will be like.
Right, no, 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 I, I agree. Primarily single family.
Well, I, I don't want to, that's, one thing I want to do is get away from using single family because I think that comes with a lot of sort of value judgment.
My reaction before, the subtlety. But this is something that people are going to, look at this, look at the map, figure out that these tiny little N1 and N2s are actually referring to neighborhood one and neighborhood two, which took me a long time to figure out. I couldn't figure, I thought these were footnotes. And then they're going to argue about that. I mean, at least in the past. Maybe we don't have those people in Urbana anymore, but I have heard from them pretty recently, so I assume we still do. But this gets back to my point. I, I think of this as a discussion document or a draft to get these issues in discussion. And maybe just leaving it as neighborhood one, neighborhood two at the moment is the best we can do.
Certainly generating discussion here.
Exactly, but that, that is.
Yeah, that's good.
And, and the matrix becomes the way to really talk about it. Because, what, neighborhood one includes a building that way?
Yeah.
Well, it's consistent with the description.
Yeah.
Okay, we need to change the description. But, you know, that's where we are, I think.
Yeah.
Or maybe you only, or maybe you only explain neighborhood two. So if you don't want to say, single-family homes, then maybe you say, only explain like multifamilies or whatever you want to say. then maybe you say, only explain like multifamilies or whatever you want to.
I I'm just trying to get away this notion of like of family as.
So again, just explain neighborhood two.
Right? Well, I mean, we could just say, single houses, right?
Yeah.
Yeah. Oh, yes.
Primarily.
And I agree with Dustin about that neighborhood center because those aren't neighborhood centers.
Yeah, I mean, a lot of things are, so this, it gets to the sort of the potion pole between what is existing now and sort of how we want things to be in the future. So, but yeah, most of them are sort of at corners or at the edges of neighborhoods or along corridors. They're not sort of in the center of the neighborhood.
Yeah, I mean, I think the description is fine. It's just what I think of or what someone might think of when they see neighborhood center might be different, but I don't know. I mean, it's, if we think of it as like, it's the connected neighborhoods, the center of the connected neighborhoods, then it's a different sort of place, right? And that maybe makes sense. But if we don't, if it's, to me, it's really just mixed use adjacent to neighborhood, adjacent to the neighborhood, right?
I think it's a mixed use node.
Yeah, but again, I think node, I don't know. Yeah, no one understands a node. I think people are more.
Also like mixed use, like I I don't think, if I'm, if I can remember back to before I was in planning school, it's kind of hard, but I didn't know what what mixed use was. Like, you know, I got into my first planning classes, like, oh, that's never heard that before. So, you know, we're we're trying to write a plan that's accessible to to anybody. So I'm trying to not use any jargon as much as we can. So, I mean, and yes, neighborhood center says mixed use in there because could say a mix of uses. I don't know, whatever. Yeah. Yeah.
Yeah, I think the key, the key is more in the descriptions, and I think the descriptions are good. So if people are looking like, what's a neighborhood center? I don't know what that is. Oh, it's this. I think that's fine then.
Yeah.
And then it comes to have a meaning based on what people understand it to be and what they understand the actual places that are mapped as this to be and their their experience of those places. So, I don't know. Yeah, I wouldn't, it's, I wouldn't get, I don't want to get too hung up on that as something to slow things down, but it was just something that I was thinking about. So the, I mean, the other thing you mentioned is, you know, a graphic or an image that communicates more of the the neighborhood scale urban design aspects of these place types.
Yeah, and we've got a few of those.
What's that?
I mean, we have a few of those for, you know, that the students put together for a few of the the place types. So, you know, we have sort of neighborhood one, neighborhood two, and I would say neighborhood center. And.
Then there was also the possibility of doing like a isometric bird's eye, not bird's eye, but isometric drone kind of image. I think that might be good. Again, like, time is of the essence, but, you know.
Yeah, and so it's that. Is it, you know, so it's it's that type of thing that I'm I'm wondering how much of that needs to be in the plan at this point? So, yes, an isometric images that point out some of these things, that would be nice to have. I don't know if it's necessary. But, you know, if it's something that we would want to add in the next year or so, do we need to do a plan amendment? Or can we just add that stuff?
Yeah, I mean, to me, it just, it comes back to the accessibility aspect, right? So it's one thing to read a paragraph and sort of visualize in your mind, well, what is this place like, right? And then it's another thing to have an image, oh, well, that means, you know, a place that has sidewalks that are this wide and the streets are this wide and it has this many lanes and the buildings are this far from the street. Like, all of that is much easier for people to understand looking at something.
Oh, I know. It's easier for me to understand, you know, so.
I I mean, we have to prioritize things, but.
So so thinking of a public hearing, or maybe at the next, if there's another planning study session, somebody will show up.
Next week.
What do we want to have?
Yeah, what do you all want me to do for next week? I've got five workdays between now and then. Or.
There's a whole plan.
A whole plan.
Besides the maps that we've talked about tonight.
Yeah, which.
Yeah.
Comments about that, too.
Needs time to have comments about that. And I don't think we should try and, we're two hours in, I don't think we should try and get into that tonight.
No, I agree.
That's what I would assume that we would spend the bulk of next week's session on.
Okay, well, let's do that. I think I've got good direction on making this stuff better. I'll work on filling out the matrix. I'm not really going to touch the descriptions or anything. I might say, single houses instead of detached housing.
But you're going to work on the matrix.
Oh, yes.
Because I I think it's unrealistic probably to get the other kinds of diagrams we're talking about, which means the matrix is crucial if we're going to have any buy-in of actual communication.
Yeah, I I think it works well, too, so, yeah. That'll be my focus here. I've got most of the day tomorrow free on my calendar, so.
Yeah, I don't want to.
You'll wake up and it'll be full by the time.
Going to enter the matrix.
I would say, you know, look at, how do real estate websites describe these things? I think, yeah, we want it to be accessible, but we also don't want to dumb things down too much. I think people are more savvy about this than maybe we're giving them credit, you know? I think, look at how this is presented in a public way through other sort of industries or, you know, the real estate in particular. And I would, I would not be shocked to see them calling things, single family homes or, you know, detached homes or something like that. Duplexes certainly.
No, I'm gonna be a dissenter as someone who works in the community. So part of, if you want to say that things are accessible, you make it accessible and the recommendation, which will be shocking, I have to always tell students, is to write things on a third to fifth grade level. I know, because it is the thing that creates the most accessibility. So we might think six to eight, but, you know, to think about diverse languages, diverse things, to think about stress brains, all of those things are going to change accessibility. And it's easier to make it sound accessible than to sound smart. And people trust the document if they understand it. The more the words sound fancy, the more people feel like you're trying to pull a bait and switch and that you're hiding things. And so that trustworthiness and transparency just matters so much for, I always say, we never want people to feel like we're, they're buying a used car from us. And so the easier the language is, the more they feel like you're not trying to trick them and the more they're willing to read it. Because if I have to like Google things, you know, to try to understand what you're trying to get and contextualize it, most people aren't going to give it that kind of time because, you know, think about it. Most people, I was talking to someone recently who was like, I can't pay attention to something more than 10 minutes. So, right, like, if we really are serious about getting people to read this, we got to assume they're not as committed as we are.
Sure. Yeah, I wouldn't try and sound smart, but look at how this is presented and other things that people interact with, and there might be some guidance from that.
Okay.
So just on that, write it for third to seventh grade level.
Yeah.
Gen AI is a great help if you want to adjust up or down the level of your audience. Maybe you can play with that, but always verify its output. I'm sure you will.
Okay.
Yeah, I so literacy check everything.
Sorry, which one was that?
Anything.
Just any sort of.
Yeah. Chat GPT will be fine for that.
What what are we checking?
Literacy checker, like, it's like, there's a literacy checker. So you can just sort of, like, I know Word has a literacy checker, you put in what you want, but you were recommending AI will also do it. And it just helps you make sure, because you'll write a sentence and you'll be like, I think that that is easy. And then you'll literacy checker and you're like, it has got multiple compound sentences and it doesn't, it's not.
Yeah, I I will say, one of our goals with this was to write it in as plain of English as possible. That's always my goal when I write planning stuff, is to make it understandable. So I just think that's better and I want people to understand it. So. All right, any other comments? We didn't actually get into the map itself, but that's okay, I think. I can, I can give a really brief overview because we're, we are two hours in. But where did I put those maps? Maybe not on this one. Ah, there we go. I just wanted to maybe talk about some of the main things. Oh, let's see, was there much main things? Well, I I made it a little. I I added some points of interest, changed some labeling and stuff. Took a lot of the university land that's agricultural, made it agricultural. I don't know if there's a whole lot I did sort of that's not be, that's that's readily apparent, other than, you know, I did did some behind the scenes stuff, but I'm always doing that stuff, so. And we've still got a lot of the old annotations and we should probably take a look at those at some point. But.
Did scan them. I'm probably not going to be here the next two meetings, so. I did scan the annotations and they actually looked pretty much okay.
Yeah, most of them are good. I think.
I didn't read every one of them.
The only one that I saw that I think we might want to take off is this thing about this UCSD. So this area is not, I don't know. Do you, I want to look at, I want to look at these few.
That annotation needs to be carefully consistent with the better data we've now got on the other maps.
Yeah.
The the neighborhood center ends up next to commercial in quite a few places. And they're kind of similar, especially when you're zoomed out. Is there a way to make that contrast a little?
Oh, you mean just how they look?
Yeah.
Yeah, I was trying to be real clever by making the neighborhood center a mix between the city center and the neighborhood two colors.
Maybe that's why it's hard to distinguish them.
But sometimes I'm just too clever for my own good. Yeah, I mean, if you zoom into, what, 150, 200%, you could really see it. Okay, yeah. I'll just make a note here. And then I guess, yeah, before we wrap up, I just wanted to, I guess, just point out, so the the most recent version of, the most recent draft of the plan that you now all have in front of you is essentially taking all the comments as best as we could, taking all the comments we'd received so far and going through old, you know, plan commission meetings, going through all of our notes and things and making changes to the plan based on those. We didn't create a red line version or anything. We just incorporated, you know, as best as we could, comments and things and made changes based on that. So it's kind of a, it's a, a new and improved document. You might not even necessarily notice that there are changes in certain sections, but, you know, we made the edits and that's what you have in front of you now, so.
All right. Any last thoughts or comments?
I I may try to figure out a way to get you my comments and the other stuff since I'm not going to be around for the remaining meetings.
I will take your comments however you can get them to me.
Editorial stuff, like the numbering systems are inconsistent and the labels for the digmows aren't consistent and.
Yeah, yeah.
Some of this stuff I'm sure you've seen, but.
And so, yeah, some of it is weird. There is some some odd formatting things when you export it to PDF that don't show up online, so.
So that's another problem.
So, yeah, but I I was able to, I think, get most of those sorted out, so.
Yeah, like the the list of acknowledgements goes over two pages and doesn't sneak in a page, so it looks really weird about who's in what group.
Oh, yeah.
There are details, that's probably an example of what you just described. But the numbers are also off. There's a, the numbers in the table of contents skip a number.
Okay. That might just be a, you know, right click and say rebuild this thing, so, okay.
Somebody will find. Yeah.
Right? I just don't, you know.
All right, with that, we are adjourned at.
Nine ten.